I mean, it's so dark, you should be playing jazz or something in here. Let's get some ea- easy jazz. Yeah. Thank you, sir. All right, well, why don't we start off, today is May 23rd, I want to welcome you to this morning's committee hearing. Mister Clerk, what do we have going? Why don't you read, go through the, the agenda?
Okay. Item number one, City Attorney Report and Ordinance relative to adding Chapter 180 to Division 5 of the Los Angeles Administrative Code to establish the Department of Cannabis Regulation Trust Fund.
In fact, you know what, we'll do it this way. Why don't we go item, we start off with item five, then, then, then slip into items six through 15, because I think we can move those items on consent.
Okay. Item number five, Motion Weston Kukorian relative to a proposed ballot measure to amend the Los Angeles City Charter to have the city election schedules conform with Senate Bill 568, which changed the date of the statewide direct primary and presidential primary to the first Tuesday after the first Monday in March, in addition to future changes to the state primary date.
Okay, on that item, why don't we adopt the recommendations of the Chair? Please continue.
Item number six, Resolution Rue Martinez and CLA report relative to including in the city's 2017-18 state legislative program support for AB 1744, which would authorize California Department of Healthcare Services to consider allocating funds to after-school programs, including the After-School Education Safety Program for revenue generated under the Adult Use of Marijuana Act.
Okay. You know, let's hold, I didn't see a card on five, I have a card for Mister Previn. So Mister Previn, that's my bad. Do you want to come up and speak on, do we see Mister Previn going once, going twice? Okay, now we'll go back to your item. In fact, just go through six through 15. Just read them on.
All right. Resolution, item seven, Resolution Weston Price and CLA report relative to including a city's 2017-18 state legislative program support for AB 2980, which would amend the additional adult use cannabis regulation safety act so that two or more premises licensed to engage in commercial cannabis activity are not prohibited from sharing common use areas where no license privileges will be exercised. Item eight, Resolution Harris Dawson Price and CLA report relative to including in the city's 2017-18 state legislative program support for AB 2731, which would close the carried interest loophole by levying an additional tax rate of 17% on the portion of a taxpayer's taxable income derived from managing a hedge fund or private equity fund that would allocate the revenues to various educational purposes. Item number nine, Resolution Corretts Harris Dawson and CLA report relative to including the city's 2017-18 federal legislative program support or sponsorship of legislation that would amend the Internal Revenue Code to include a tax exemption for any housing tenant receiving relocation assistance as a result of a lawful eviction or voluntary lease buyout. Item 10, Resolution Harris Dawson Englander and CLA report relative to including the city's 2017-18 state legislative program support for SB 923, which would require law enforcement agencies and prosecutorial entities to adopt regulations for conducting photo lineups and live lineups with eyewitnesses. Item number 11, Resolution Corretts O'Farrell and CLA to report relative to including the city's 2017-18 federal legislative program opposition to any legislative or administrative action which would weaken or eliminate the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. Item 12, Resolution Rodriguez O'Farro Bonin Harris Dawson et al. and CLA report relative to including the city's 2017-18 federal legislative program support for the issuance of a United States postage stamp honoring civil rights leader Bayard Rustin. Item 13, Resolution Corretts Rue and CLA report relative to including in the city's 2017-18 state legislative program support for AB 2363, which would authorize a local authority to establish lower speed limits under certain conditions. Item 14, Resolution Boscano Bloomingfield and CLA report relative to including the city's 2017-18 federal legislative program opposition to President Donald Trump's executive order that imposes tariffs on steel and aluminum products. Item 15, Resolution Englander Boscano and CLA report relative to including in the city's 2017-18 state legislative program support for AB 2930, which would authorize, reauthorize until January 1st, 2024, a nuisance eviction pilot program that conditionally allows city attorneys and prosecutors in Los Angeles to bring eviction proceedings against tenants for committing nuisance violations, including unlawful weapons. And that is it for that.
Thank you very much. So again, I'm calling on Mister Previn, Eric Previn. I don't see him, so on, on item five, we will adopt the recommendations of the Chair. On items six through 15, we will adopt the CLA reports and resolutions. So Mister Clerk, that should bring us to items one, two, three, and four, correct?
Correct.
So I'm, I'm gonna start taking public comment from the rest of the group that's here. Let's start off with Mike, I see you right up in the front row, followed by Laura Zavala. So Mike, you can, oh, Gary, you can come on up. And then, then, uh-oh, I lost my...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Regarding the billboards, I'm wondering if we can control the number of billboards we put in each community. At the present time, Sun Valley seems to be overrun by those billboards. And the size of some of them is just extremely huge. That's my only comment. The other thing is, why aren't we closing the illegal cannabis retail stores? They are hurting the people who put out a lot of money and are paying 35% tax. That's why one of them went to billboards, because all his customers went away. So the legal places are really suffering, and we need to start closing down the illegal ones, which we have a large number of in Sun Valley. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Laura, Patrick McFarland. Then after Patrick, Rafael Gonzalez. Yes, welcome.
Hello, good morning. My name is Laura Zavala. I'm the Director of Policy and Research for a nonprofit organization called Inner City Struggle in the east side of Los Angeles. We work to advance educational justice for youth and parents in public schools in the east side. And I'm here today to recognize the support expressed for child and youth development, and the recognition of the important connection between past cannabis policy and its impact to high-needs families and communities. We hope to continue engaging with the city's Rules Committee to further a proposal to set aside funds for programs, services, and activities for children and youth that cover the full age spectrum, 0 to 24. We also hope to see funds generated to advance equity and allow for needed social programs, which includes social equity programs, expungement clinics, and child and youth development. And lastly, we stand ready to support the development of a fund that is sizable for youth and families most impacted throughout our cities, including the east side. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick, then I'm looking for Rafael, and Robert, I don't know, Chala, is that Sade? Sade. And Tamar. Yep, Patrick.
Good morning. First, I want to thank Council President Weston and Council Member Harris Dawson and the Council Rules Committee for their leadership on this issue of child and youth development. And I want to recognize the important link between the war on drugs and the development of youth in Los Angeles. The city has a tremendous opportunity here to ensure that funding from cannabis revenue is allocated to provide support for children from impacted communities. According to the census, Los Angeles has over 286,000 children under the age of six and virtually no programs geared towards child development. These funds should advance equity, they should include public education, social equity programs, expungement clinics, and child and youth development programs. A funding set aside is important, and also, it's also vital that funding is sufficient and concentrated within the equity maps. We stand ready to, to support the implementation of these funds as they move forward, and again, we thank you for your leadership on this issue.
Patrick, where are you now?
Crystal stairs.
Okay, all right. Next speaker. Hey, good to see you.
Good to see you too. Good morning. On, on behalf of First Five LA, I want to start off by thanking, the Rules Committee thanking you, Council President Weston, Council Member Harris Dawson, and of course, Council Member Jose Wezar, for your continued support of child and youth development, and for recognizing that important link between past cannabis policy and children. You have demonstrated this by your consideration to set aside funds for programs for children and youth, also by expanding the definition of youth development to cover that full age spectrum between 0 to 24. By incorporating a strong focus on youth development that clearly targets children and youth, the city of LA can ensure that these funds are advancing equity, and that its most impacted children are receiving adequate supporting communities most affected by prior cannabis policy. This is especially true for children under the age of six, a population of 286,000 here in the city of Los Angeles, who have no programs or dollars geared towards them. We also want to make sure, you know, that these programs receive sufficient and sizable funding. It's being expected that cannabis is going to be a billion-dollar industry. Again, we applaud the Rules Committee for their bold leadership on behalf of future generations of Angelinos. Thank you.
And good to see you again. Next speaker, please. Introduce yourself.
Hi, good morning. My name is Robert Schlella. I'm a social equity researcher with United Food and Commercial Workers Local 770. First, we want to sincerely thank you, all of you, Council President Weston, Council Member Harris Dawson, Council Member Wezar, and Director Cat Papper for continuing the conversation on social equity in this next piece around the Neighborhood Health Fund and Community Reinvestment. We want to strongly express our support for a sizable fund that can meet both the tremendous cost of the war on drugs, as well as potential future harms, that include and have focused intergenerationally, targeting youth, but also being able to meet the needs of adults who've been affected by the system. So we strongly suggest and urge a sizable fund that can really meet these needs, and can meet the kind of impact they've had on communities, and so they're directed to the communities that have been most affected. Again, we sincerely thank you for continuing to open this conversation, and we're here to help provide support in any way we can to drive it forward. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Yes, identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Shadell Hawari, and I'm representing Community Coalition. Thank you to the City Council Rules Committee. We definitely are looking to work with the city to ensure the creation of the Cannabis Reinvestment Fund as soon as possible. We stand with the groups here today to ensure that there's a significant investment in young people and children up to the age of 24, especially because as an organization, our adult residents are sharing story after story about how the marijuana dispensaries are targeting their children, and we want to ensure that in, in, in understanding South LA and the past punitive measures that have really taken a toll on our community, African-Americans and Latinos especially, we want to ensure that equitable funding from the fund is able to be allocated to the communities most impacted. Thank you so much for the incredible leadership of the Rules Committee. Have a great day.
Thank you. And you know, Mister Harris Dawson here told me he really doesn't know a lot about Community Coalition, and so maybe you could explain it to him. Thank you so much for coming. Tamar, and then Tyrone, Mister Freeman. Yes?
Good morning. My name is Toma Graziani. I come to you as an operator that qualifies under the chain of supply. I'd like to thank you, all the council members, for trying to address this issue and recognizing that we had, the ones that have been operating before 2016, and have operated with property shops, should deserve some sort of path to licensure. I'd like to ask you for some clarity on that. As you may know, a few of the bigger operators have already left Los Angeles because they needed to get a license, they needed to continue operations. The smaller one of us that are able to either transition to CBD or to cease operations while we look for investment, investors in order to find a place, we're at a loss. Not only do we need to find someone who qualifies for social equity, and someone that we trust and we would want to get in business with, we don't really know what are the exact locations and parameters for that. So it's very difficult to find that, let alone to find someone that would be willing to finance a project that does not have a start date. So please give us some clarity on when we should be able to expect something.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mister Freeman, and then Sarah, I'm gonna have you be the closer.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the committee. On behalf of California Minority Alliance and the Latino Caucus, we rise in support of item number one, and I also throw in item number two. We believe that the trust fund is not only the avenue of concentrating the opportunity of change in the community from the devastating impact of the war on drugs, but it also allows for the city to come together under the umbrella of regulating this industry, and we support that. Most importantly, I think it's important to highlight that not only is this trust fund beneficial to the players of the industry, but also to all of the auxiliary groups, Mister Chairman. For example, landowners and property owners benefit from this trust fund based on the community involvement and the beautification aspects of it. Not only is education a foremost important aspect of gain and understanding and knowledge of the industry is positive for our community, it's one of those particular characteristics of the community that were actually attacked on the war on drugs, where parents and families were separated and education opportunities lost and degraded, and this is an opportunity to enhance that, and we thank you for what this means and what it can do.
Thank you, Ms. Armstrong.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning to you.
I am Sarah Armstrong, Director of Industry Affairs for Americans for Safe Access and the Policy Chair for the Southern California Coalition. Americans for Safe Access stands in strong support of item number one, an ordinance which creates a special revenue tax fund, and we would ask that Ms. Packer have absolute control over this. We also strongly support the idea of a neighborhood health and community benefit program. We feel that the cannabis community, particularly the patients, are very grateful to the city for creating a space for us, and we would like anybody in any neighborhood who has a need that we can help address to receive some assistance. I'm sorry that I cannot bring the SCC endorsements today. Our board will meet on Friday, and we hope to have a letter for you soon. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, Mister Previn, I'm gonna give you a minute. I called you earlier, so you could...
Which item, sir?
Well, at this point, we're dealing with items one, two, three, and four. The other items have been moved.
Well, so all the other items are pushed through, it's just the marijuana regulation items? Thank you. Sir, first of all, I'd like to thank Harris Dawson and Price for the plus 17% on hedge funds. Make in mind, this is a, this is a robust attack on the establishment, we appreciate it. But for Mister Fabel, who likes to stay on the point, item one is the Regulation Trust Fund. I know you've set up several different trust funds. One is to do some repair work on the war on drugs impact, and I applaud that. I just, I just need to understand a little bit more about how that, I think the people want to understand how that works, and I think it's a great area, because obviously that was a disproportionate impact, and we want to try to mitigate that if we possibly can. And that said, from the street, there's a lot of regulations, and I think that we're gonna, we have to be mindful of not getting a black market backlash, because people realize, hey, this is 50% more than what I used to pay, this is crazy. Plus, minor thing, give me one second.
No, you got, now just finish your thoughts.
No, I know, you're busy. This recycling containers, let's make the containers easily recyclable, because that is just outrageous. They need to be recyclable, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mister Previn. Okay, Mister Clerk, Mister City Attorney, that closes the public comment portion of today's committee hearing. Why don't I bring up our Director, Pat Catt Packard, if you could come, come up and walk us through these items? You guys can come up as well. Just make sure, Ms. Packard, you sit in the center seat, the ejector seats are on either side of you, the, the middle seat is good.
All right. Good morning.
Morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to address this Rules Committee, Council Member Harris Dawson, Council President Weston. What I'd like to do is to give this committee an update on what the Department of Cannabis Regulation has been doing over the course of the last several months, particularly with the implementation of the city's new licensing and regulatory framework, and moving forward with Phase 1 and Phase 2 of licensing. Also want to just express genuine appreciation for the leadership that has been shown within the City Council, within this Rules Committee. Last week, I had an opportunity to join a Senate informational hearing on equity. The state may be considering adopting a statewide equity program. And that is largely because of folks like you, who have stood up and shown leadership on this issue. Two years ago, no city in the country had an equity program. Now there are four jurisdictions throughout, the state of California, Sacramento, San Francisco, Oakland, and the city of Los Angeles, who have put these programs in motion. And what I found most interesting, as these conversations have developed throughout the United States, and we had invited regulators from other jurisdictions and other states to share this conversation as well, is that we recognize that there are many critical decisions that have to be made as we continue to consider cannabis policies. But many jurisdictions have skipped the important step of understanding and acknowledging how past cannabis policies have affected communities, and making intentional efforts to address those harms moving forward. And so, again, just want to appreciate your leadership on this issue. Many of the recommendations and conversations that are happening today allow us to move that conversation but a step forward, and that is such a critically important conversation to have. Although the development and implementation of a social equity program is complex in its own right, so is the establishment and launch of a licensing and regulatory program in the largest city in the country to dive into the regulation of commercial cannabis activity. Back in December of last year, this council and our mayor passed ordinances to, for the first time, allow the city of Los Angeles to authorize commercial cannabis activity. Important to note that prior to January 1st, 2018, the city of Los Angeles expressly prohibited cannabis activity, but gave certain businesses limited immunity from prosecution. So a huge advancement in the evolution of our cannabis policies. With these ordinances that were passed in December, we were given specific directions to give priority in the processing of applications to our existing medical marijuana dispensaries. And despite having a small staff, we have done just that. There are a number of applications that we have reviewed in order to move this process forward. And very quickly, I will kick it over to my colleague Jason Colleen to provide an update on our licensing thus far.
Good morning, Jason Colleen, Department of City Planning. As part of the priority processing, also commonly referred to as Phase 1, the department accepted 519 applications. To date, 70% of those applications have been fully processed by the department, resulting in 147 locations that have received temporary approval from the Department of Cannabis Regulation. And we also have outstanding invoices for another 13 locations. Once those invoices are paid, we anticipate that we'll have at least 160 licensed, or temporarily approved, locations within the city. We're still in the process of combing through the additional 155 applications. Another, a number of those applications have not been fully vetted due to incomplete application submittals or ownership disputes, and we continue to work with those applicants to resolve those outstanding issues. To date, the department has collected about $3.6 million in funds. Once the special fund is actually created, those monies would be deposited into the special fund and fund licensing activities, which would include the pre-inspections, the full applications and the public hearings that are anticipated to occur next fiscal year. The department has made significant progress in working with the EXCELIT team to build out the EXCELIT licensing system to support Phase 2 operations, the creation of the social equity ownership category, the resulting tiers for the social equity ownership categories. And we are on track to open Phase 2 by July 1st of this fiscal, or this calendar year, and that's the update.
Thank you, Jason. In addition to being able to move forward with the processing of Phase 1 applications, this department has been working very intentionally with stakeholders across the city, including the mayor's office, including this Rules Committee, the Budget and Finance Committee, and a number of other city agencies, to build the infrastructure necessary for us to continue this conversation. Important to note that we've taken significant first steps, but we are just getting started in our process. The amendments that are before this Rules Committee today allow us to move forward intentionally with our priorities, allowing us to continue to prioritize equity, the promotion of public health and safety. So thank you for the opportunity to address this committee.
Let me ask, what else could we do to make you, your, your department function more efficiently? You know, what things do you need from us? What should we be thinking about as a committee? What, what should we, you know, have on the agenda? Well, you know, what, how can we? This is very important, and we appreciate all of the kind things that you said at the beginning of your remarks. But this, to me, even though the people that are here today, we have not always agreed, but we have always agreed to try to work together. And, you know, like, I think Tamar has not missed a meeting. I mean, Yana may have missed a meeting, but the people that are, are here, we've really worked together. And I think that's why we're at the point that we're, we're, we're at. So is there anything additional that we can do?
Absolutely. I, I appreciate the, the question. There's a lot of work that the department and the city in general needs to do to, to move this conversation forward. A lot of this process is coordination and communication with many different stakeholders. There are industry operators who are involved in this conversation, health professionals, community members. What we'd like to be able to do, the department and through our Cannabis Regulation Commission, is to work very intentionally with City Council to make this process as transparent as possible. We recognize that with the limited capacity that we've had, we all, we always haven't had the opportunity to engage with community members in, as meaningful a way as we can. Despite us being limited in capacity, we've had an opportunity to engage with a number of neighborhood councils. We've had an opportunity to take a number of meetings with stakeholders. But for us to do it the right way, folks need to be able to be a part of conversations as decisions are being made. In addition, there are recent changes that have been made to the department's personnel that would allow us to expand our capacity, want to be realistic in saying that it will take time for us to scale up and to move forward with different functions. But in addition to personnel, there is programming and coordination that's needed, and working directly with council on these programming issues would be critical. For example, we sent a letter to the Budget and Finance Committee during the budget process to highlight areas of policy that were still being developed that would have an impact on the success of our regulatory program. Those three different items that we named were continuing conversations about enforcement, and what it would look like to have equitable enforcement, building out the social equity program, and then also allowing the department to move forward with a public information and outreach campaign, so that we're sharing information and engaging with stakeholders appropriately. These conversations still need to move forward, particularly on this enforcement conversation. We've been working very intentionally with the mayor's office in coordinating conversations with various entities in the city that have enforcement tools. But in order for us to do this the right way, in order for us to do this in the most efficient way, folks have to be able to work together, collaborate from the beginning, and, and make this a transparent process. And so, all of the things that you've done already to lend to that process, I appreciate it, and appreciate in advance what we can do to move this conversation forward.
Okay, well, we appreciate that and appreciate you. And, you know, the first speaker today, Mike from the valley, talked about enforcement. And I'm sure that the, the businesses that have gone through this process want to see us up and, you know, enforcing this. So we want to, you know, just to everybody, we're, we're trying, we're moving together in the, you know, to try to get to a certain place. It may take us a minute to get there, but we are committed to, to get there. Mister Harris Dawson, did you have anything, or Ms. Packard, is there anything more?
No, thank you.
Okay. You want to say something? Nice, nice tie, I mean, man, you, let me, it's, do you let...
I work especially for today.
Okay, do, do you work for...
I'm Alex Friedman, Deputy City Attorney in-house at DCR.
Okay, so we want you to make sure you introduce yourself. Okay, so, we want you to make sure you introduce yourself, so your boss knows that you came to work this morning.
Yes, exactly. And I work time.
We don't want you to just sit there and not say anything. So, anyway, let me ask you, uh, uh, from, from a, a legal perspective, from the city attorney's office, you know, are there things that, that you, you need from us? How is, uh, the, the back and forth with the, uh, the department? How's that going with you guys? Because in order for this to work, you have to work like a team.
So, we have a three-person city attorney team that works in-house at DCR's offices, and we've been working hand in hand. So, every step of the way, we're in constant communication with Kat and her team, um, talking about changes to ordinance we need for enforcement and for licensing, and so, so far, the relationship is, uh, working very well.
Okay, well, thank you. So, with that said, uh, if, Ms. Packard, if you, if you guys are done, and Mr. Har- Harris-Dawson, you don't have anything to say, Mr. Clerk, why don't we, on item one, adopt the city attorney report and draft ordinance as amended by, I think it was a technical correction, uh, on item two, adopt the recommendation, uh, recommendations of the chair. Three, adopt the city attorney report and draft ordinance and instruct the Department of Building and Safety to report back with an implementation plan to enforce the ordinance, and on item four, let's adopt the recommendations of the chair. Okay, so, uh, that, that's, that's moved unanimously, and, um, is there any other business before this?
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so then, this committee's adjourned. Again, thank you all for coming.